Thank you for joining us tonight. This event is being broadcast live this evening on KBUR. We'll have a media break sometime during this forum. My name is Bob Bartles and I'm with the Hope Haven Organization. I'm a member of the Government Relations Committee and I'll be your moderator for this evening. Our timekeeper is Kyrie Duckett with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interests of time and fairness to the other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Kyrie's signal and stop your response when the time is up for a response. The forum will consist of rounds of questions and response times will vary by question. The order of response will be rotated so that each candidate has the opportunity to be the first to answer a question. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions impromptu, so they've not seen the questions in advance. This is the first of two forums and the additional candidates on the ballot will participate this Thursday evening at 5:30 right here in this room. This evening, candidates have been placed on the stage in alphabetical order. David Cloke, Scott Deal, it should be Bill L. and Michael Elmer.
Uh-oh.
Considering that I'm the guy that set that up, I'm sure this will be okay.
It looked alphabetical.
Bob Fleming, Linda Murray, and Matt Rinker. And with that, we'll begin tonight's debate. And I'll start with Matt Rinker. As you introduce yourself tonight, please also tell us the why behind your candidacy.
My name is Matt Rinker, Burlington resident, lifelong Burlington resident, local shelter insurance agent. The reason I'm running for the Burlington City Council is because I'm concerned with the direction of our community, both from a growth standpoint and as I become personally invested in our community, both socially, financially, and I've made this my home for the long term, I want to try and improve the direction of our community when it comes to things like growth, crime, and trying to improve the overall quality and quality of life for people that live in Burlington.
Linda?
Good evening, Bob, Kyrie, and members of the listening audience and our big audience here. My life experiences and my career have led me down the path to public service. I've worked with all ages of the lifespan, from grade school through the grave. I'd like to give back to a community that has given me so much. I love Burlington. I love Snake Alley. I've raced it three times. You got European cycling at its finest. I'm always surprised how many citizens have not come out and watched these races. They really are a thrill. Native Iowan, like I said, I love the Hawkeye State. Married, two wonderful boys, one of them hopefully qualified for Gulf State Tournament today. He got me up at four in the morning because he couldn't find his shirt. But let's see, in my free time, I enjoy playing guitar, swimming, walking my dogs, and writing. I have a lot of experience with working with, like I said, all different ages of the lifespan. I'm interested to get involved in politics. When most people think of serving in politics, they want to do one of three things: give up, shut up, or throw up, but not me. I want to roll up those sleeves and get to work, working for the people of Burlington.
Mr. Fleming?
Hey, my name is Bob Fleming. Lived here all my life, and I'm proud of that, I might add. I'm currently serving on the city council because I really enjoy city government. I think it's a role we can play in trying to improve our community. In fact, I got involved in 1968 with a group to change to this current form of government. And that's where I got a taste, I guess, of city government under the council manager form. And that got me motivated, I guess, and I've been interested ever since. I like Burlington. I'm one that emphasizes the positive more so than the negative, and I think we can do better. Thank you.
Mr. L.
Thank you, Bob. Let me first thank the chamber for hosting this event and letting me participate. I have a couple of goals. Some of them are personal, some are not. Personal goals I might have is just simply to serve a position on the council and be effective and efficient if I can. Secondly, is just to, one of the things that I'd learned when I was there before was that you have to work as a team. I can be a team player. That's really important in city government. And another thing that I noted when I was there before was the respect that other communities had for Burlington, Iowa. I used to go to various things, league meetings and whatnot, and they would say, "Well, you guys are already doing that. That's great." So I was proud of that. So I'm, like Bob says, I'm proud of Burlington as well. There are some goals, though, that we need to look at down the road, all of which probably cost money, but nevertheless, we have to pursue them. Some is just simply to draw people to our community, increase our tax base, do a number of things to raise our revenue. I'm not real big on raising taxes, but I like revenue and things like that. So I'd like to be part of that process again, make those difficult decisions, and I'll be there to do that. So thank you very much.
Mr. L.
My name is Michael Elmer. I am 59. I was raised here in Burlington, moved away when I was 18, spent 40 years in Georgia, 12 in Savannah, 28 in Atlanta. I came back here a little over two years ago and moved back into the house I grew up in. I'm here with my wife of 24 years. And I had promised her that Burlington was Mayberry, as I remembered it, and a couple of months after being here, she reminded me, "No, this isn't Mayberry." I'd been involved knee-deep in this city since I got back. I recognize that we have a tremendous crime problem. It starts with drugs, gang activity, the recent shootings. I've been involved with Amy Beevers. I've been involved with the police chief. I think that's our number-one problem, that and taxes. My parents were always involved in this city as I grew up. My father was instrumental in the going away from commissioner to council and a city manager. And I grew up watching him. My goal is to make Burlington a safer place, get our taxes under control so that people can afford to live here. We've got a median income here that's less than $40,000 combined, and we're out doing things that are way beyond most people's means. We have to prioritize what we do. We've got to get our business in order, and we've got to get our crime under control. And that's why I'm running.
Mr. Deal?
Yes, I'm Scott Deal. What I want to emphasize more than anything else is that if we're going to get business growth and if we're going to get a higher tax base, we have to attack crime. That is our number-one issue. I don't care what anyone else says, we have to go after crime. It's been my issue since I started campaigning back in February. I'm still saying it now. I still hear it every single night from the majority of people, is that crime is the number-one thing. We can't attract new businesses, good-paying jobs. We cannot increase our low tax base because of our dilapidated neighborhoods and nuisance issues that we have if we don't address crime. And I have the most aggressive crime platform of any candidate out of the 15, 16, whatever they are, record-setting people that are, you know, trying to get on the city council. I've been saying we need more police officers, we need community policing, we need youth prevention programs, we need crime cameras in neighborhoods, we need to be aggressive, we need to go after the crime issue. If we attack that first and foremost, then we can attract business, we can bring better jobs, higher-paying jobs, and that will make Burlington better.
Mr. Cloke?
My name's Dave Cloke. I've lived here all my life, except for the short tour I took when I wrote that blank check for the U.S. government and I served. I just, I don't know. Crime, we got to clean up, like Mr. Deal said, Mr. Elmer said, and the other candidates are saying. Everybody's got the same platform on that, and that's great, because that is going to bring in business if we get rid of that. We need to do something with the housing around here. Some of it's dilapidated. We need to get in there and reinforce, like some of these landlords let their stuff go too long. It needs to be in there, get reinforced. We need to clean this place up. If we don't get that done, we ain't going to grow any. We're just going to stay right where we at. We're going to stall. That's what we're basically going to do. I mean, I'm here, I'm a voice for the people. My voice really don't matter to me. It's what the people want. That's what I want to get, and I'll fight for them. Thank you.
The second question I'm going to start with, Ms. Murray. And the question is, of the things you would like to see accomplished during your term in office, what priority do you give to the repair and opening of Cascade Bridge? And how do you propose to do it? It's a 30-second.
When I was canvassing my neighborhood, Cascade Bridge came across loud and clear as a hangnail of a problem or speed bump that people wanted addressed. I know we don't have it in, it's targeted on the books, it's 2020 or 2024, but it does appear that people would really like that open as a thoroughfare to our beautiful parks, to use the pool that's going to get the pool bubble. So we'll have to get it done quickly, and I need you to talk quicker.
Mr. Fleming?
Same question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I've been very open from day one, saying, "Let's get Cascade Bridge open." I mean, I tried to get it on our CIP program on a high priority, and we've done that, but because of the funding issue, it's obviously going to take a while to do it. But we are going to get it done.
Mr. L.
As I understand it, it is in the long-range plan, and I believe it is, as Linda said, 2024, that they're going to be willing to talk about it. The issue's going to be, when we closed it, it was about a $3 million fix, and now it's probably maybe six, and it could even be seven. So funding it is going to be difficult, but there are going to have some things positive happen between now and then, so they may be able to talk about it in 2024.
Mr. Elmer?
I think Cascade Bridge needs to be a priority in the fact that we need to find the government funding to help us to replace that bridge. There's dilapidated bridges and infrastructure all across the country. There's federal funds that are out there. We just have to find them. Once we find them, then that bridge can become a priority, because it's $6.7 million, which was the last estimate I heard. That's not money the city of Burlington has on its own. So we've got to make it a priority to find the funding first.
Let me first say that the present city council, it is the lowest priority on their agenda, and it has been since day one. But with that being said, what I want to propose and what I've been telling people in those areas that live, that I've been campaigning since February in, knocking on doors, is that we have to look to the federal government. We have an opportunity, it's a very brief opportunity, but the Senate, or the Senate and the Congress and the president will come together with that infrastructure bill.
You have to stick with the timeline, sir.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Mr. Cloke?
Cascade Bridge is going to be what it's going to be until the funds are available. I mean, I can't just pull a rabbit out of the hat, and I can't pull the money out of a hat either. We all know that. You know, Burlington will not be able to support that right at this time, but hopefully in the near future, it will happen. We can only hope and pray.
I'll start with Mr. Fleming for the next question. Oh, Matt, Matt, Matt.
It's okay, we can move on if you want. No, I think infrastructure as a whole is something, as a community, that we need to make sure that we're taking care of. The last thing we want to do is get behind on that, because then those costs continue to increase. Cascade Bridge is on the docket, I believe, for 2024, and you're correct, it does have about a $6.5 million price tag, and that'll probably go up at that time. If funding becomes available before then, then I'm all for moving forward with that project, but ultimately, as a priority with a lot of the other issues we have, it remains where it is.
Now, I'll start with Mr. Fleming. What is the greatest unrealized opportunity for the Burlington area?
The what?
The greatest unrealized opportunity for the Burlington area.
How much time do I have?
60 seconds.
I don't know that I can come up with an answer on that. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that question, but I might think about it later.
Mr. L.
Well, I don't know. I'm feeling a little bit like Bob. That's a big question. There's a lot of things that are happening in Burlington that's going to be neat for us. One of the things that comes to mind right away is, of course, the flood wall down here. That's a biggie. Now, if that whole thing works as it should, I haven't been privy to the plans or specs on that yet, but I'd like to. I don't know what they're going to do with things like Hawkeye sewer and some of those things, but that's probably one of the bigger things, and that riverfront then becomes much more useful. That would be that.
Mr. Elmer?
I'm going to go outside the box and say our youth. If we can eradicate crime in this town and give these young people an education and opportunities to go out and find real jobs, to pay real incomes, then we've got a vast resource of new people that will stay here and contribute to the community. Right now, these kids get caught up between these gangs and, you know, a job at McDonald's, and they have no opportunities. Southeastern Community College has stepped up, and Burlington High School has finally brought back their building trades. But these kids have to have a usable skill that they can use money, that they can earn money, and that's our most unrealized thing that we have in this town, is our young people.
Mr. Deal?
I do agree with Mr. Elmer as well, but in addition, I think we need to be proactive in suggesting developing and supporting sources for growing our low tax base. We have an interior, low-tax base with dilapidated housing and nuisance issues, and I'm 100% against raising taxes. But with that being said, because that's hurting our most vulnerable citizens, the senior citizens, and the poor, so we must increase that tax base. And so what that means is that we have to come up with issues and ideas, such as the staff or city staffers suggested recently this week in block grants. I don't know how the city can afford that, but it is something that we can look at. There are a lot of different ideas and suggestions out there, and I'm all in the mix of it.
Well, I'm going to have to agree, like Scott did with Mr. Elmer, because going outside the box is where we need to be thinking all the time, because staying in the norm like we have, we've grown nowhere. So I agree with him, and I agree with Scott Deal too on what he just said. But as far as my total opinion, I'm going to have to just reflect on that and, you know, reply on that at a later date.
Mr. Rinker?
I think our most underutilized asset in our community is probably our riverfront. There's not a lot of communities in America like ours that have a riverfront. It's not something we've done a very good job of in the last 20 or 30 years of promoting in our community. We do have several events down there, but I think they can be better. I serve on the Riverfront Advisory Committee, and I was on the Riverfront Steering Committee that put the plans together that are currently being implemented on the riverfront. I'm excited about the future of the riverfront, and I feel like that's something that we could use in the long run to draw people into our community, not only from a tourism standpoint, but as a residence standpoint. I'd like to see us continue to develop that. I'd like to see more beautification downtown and along the riverfront, and I think that that would help better showcase our community for those people that do come to Burlington.
Ms. Murray?
Burlington's riverfront is underdeveloped. Communities that have well-developed recreational options, intact sidewalks, bike trails, rollerblading, they're seen as more favorable to potential future employers than communities without these. Like I said before, Des Moines is adding a fishing pier, a splash pad, hiking trails, benches, foot bridges, and other family-friendly amenities to their riverfront. We could consider a small boutique hotel. Riverfront property is prime real estate, and it should command top dollar. I would love to see the expansion of walking, biking trails, benches, water fountains that work. That speaks to the people. We welcome you here. When we have broken, frayed sidewalks, curbs, bridges, and drinking fountains, it says, "You're not welcome here. Go find a soda machine."
There are very difficult decisions that the council must wrestle with on a recurring basis. This question has two parts. First, what evidence would you offer from your prior experiences that you are a sound decision-maker? As a follow-up, what will matter more to you when making a decision? Trusting your gut or citizen input? Mr. L.
Well, let's see. No one's really asked the question yet, but I happened to sit in this chair when the manor was sold, and no one's really asked me would I do that again? Well, at the time, you know, we didn't know what the economy was going to do, and we were not aware that it was going to go in the dumps. And at the time, I think we were getting about $80,000 taxes off of that property out there. I think we will already get much more than that now with what's there. So over time, we will probably benefit in that respect, and it's going to make a much more favorable introduction to our city as people come through that area. So would I do that again? Probably I would, unless I knew the economy was going to go in the tanks like it did, but I would do that. And so that was a tough decision at the time, very tough, because it took a lot of homes, and people were unhappy with it, some. Some were not, though, and we've seen articles in the paper since that time that maybe it was a good idea. So yeah, I think decisions like that speak to my ability maybe to make a tough decision. And how would I operate now? Probably as I always have, with citizen input and my gut both. Yeah, so that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Elmer?
First part of your question, for 17 years, I owned a company in Atlanta installing rubber playgrounds, surfacing. I was in charge of the sales installation, every part of the company. We did sales anywhere from $900,000 a year down. That company was debt-free. I'm debt-free. I lived that way, and I feel it's conservative that, you know, if I can't afford it, I don't buy it. And as a city, we have to think the same way. A small debt in a city is maybe okay, but for the most part, we have to live within our means, and I've done that for the majority of my life. As far as the second part of your question, citizen input is extremely important, but so is my gut. So I would mix both and measure what, in the end, I felt was the best for the majority of Burlington, based on their input and based on my gut.
Let me just say, and I'm going to go to the second part of the question first, is that citizen input in a republic or a democracy that we have is the utmost importance. The people need to be heard on the city council. And I am just reflecting on the last year and a half that I've religiously attended city council meetings and have not been heard by the present city council. We need to listen to the people. They have great, creative, innovative ideas, and we should listen to them. And that's what I keep saying every single night. I'm listening, and I want to bring that majority voice to the council. Otherwise, we need to move forward, like Mr. Elmer said, we need to move forward and look at the different things that we're doing. We have to decide as a city what our needs and what our wants are, just like a child at Christmas. We have needs and we have wants. And too many times, city staffers and the city has gone to wants over needs, and we can only afford what we need.
Mr. Cloke?
Well, I kind of agree. There shouldn't be a want when you're sitting up here on the city council. It should all be needs of the community. They're the priority. You would be the reason we're sitting here, not me, not Scott, the community. They're the ones that are going to make the decision, the final decision, the end one. The end game should be a voice for the people and do what is wanted, or I mean, needed, not wanted. As far as, do we do it? Gut, people? I'd use both. Being in the military, you know, when we were over there in the desert, you use both. You use your buddy and you use your gut.
I'm going to repeat the question here. There's two parts to it. What evidence would you offer from your prior experiences that you are a sound decision-maker? And as a follow-up, what will matter more to you when making a decision? Trusting your gut or citizen input? Mr. Rinker?
The only evidence that I can offer up is my success in things that I've done previously. I spent five years in the U.S. military, and during that time, I was a military police officer, so every day was tough decisions. Since then, I've graduated from the local Southeastern Community College and Western Illinois University, started a family, started a business that's been very successful. So throughout that entire time, there was nothing but difficult decisions to make, whether it's juggling things like time, or money, or which direction in order to take it, whether it's a project or just, you know, what do we have for dinner tonight? I mean, everything seems to be a tough decision when you're juggling that number of things in life. I would also say, I would like to say as far as whether it's my gut or the people, I think you have to listen to both. And your gut is, the decisions that your gut puts in front of you is the previous experiences that you've had, and that is what helps lead you moving forward. But then, everybody appears right. We represent the people. We have to listen to not just a few groups of people, but many groups of people, whether it's people who are renters or property owners, small business owners and large manufacturing plants, general managers, things like that.
Ms. Murray?
I would have to say that my sense of teamwork and ability to collaborate with others, to create a synergy that occurs, would probably how, one example that comes to mind, how I used to sound decision-making skills, would be I was in charge of coordinating the first Iowa Dietetic Association meeting in Iowa. It was a big two-day meeting. We attracted over 200 people. I had a team of volunteers, and I raised over $14,000. Granted, this was in the early 1990s. We hired professional presenters, coordinated all the meals, the activities, the brochures, registration, photography, room rental, block of rooms, everything. It was one of the most rewarding times of my life, and a lot of decisions had to be made, both financially, where we were even going to hold the place, and it earned me the Recognize Young Dietitian of the Year Award, and I was so thrilled to get this honor. And I guess that speaks to my ability to work together and collaborate with other people. And I would say I would have to work in tandem, working with what the people want, the people's interests. City government is closest to the people. I have to represent what they want, their wishes, dreams, aspirations. But then I do have a woman's intuition, so I would work with my gut as well.
Mr. Fleming?
I think my experience on the city council has been worthwhile as far as I'm concerned. We've made a lot of decisions, and a lot of them are good ones. I also think of equal importance, so I worked for 40 years with a local company here, and I was a vice president and management in that for many years. So I was in a position where we had to make a lot of decisions that affected a lot of people on a national scale in that case. And I think that still carries forward in my thinking and how I approach and look at problems and so forth. As far as the second part of the question, it has to be a combination of both. Listening to the people, of course, is always a challenge. What people do we talk to? I mean, if you talk to a half a dozen that come down to a city council meeting, I'm respectful of them, but I can't say that they reflect the whole community. And I think that's what we're here for, is we have to listen. And I think that's what we're here for, is we have to listen to every avenue that's coming to us, and we have to be aware of what the different thoughts are, because one person's going to come up, and I'm all for this, the other guy's going to come up and say I'm against it. It ends up with us. We have to make the decisions.
Mr. Elmer.
Uh, is that the same? I answered that one, didn't I, or did I not?
He started that one.
I think I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nobody should confuse me for just a second there.
Just see he's paying attention. He's paying attention.
That's all right.
Let's role-play one of those important decisions you'll have to make. It's budget-related. We are tens of millions of dollars behind in upgrading our sewer system to comply with EPA requirements. Cascade Bridge is closed. Mount Pleasant Overstreet, Mount Pleasant Street Overpass needs significant work. Many local streets and roads need work. As a community, we are also trying to add police and fire personnel. How should we pay for all of these things?
That sounds pretty much like the current situation of Burlington.
Well, yes, Mr. Deal starts. Mr. Elmer starts. Go ahead, Mr. Elmer, I'm sorry.
What I was going to say is, obviously, we have a lot of things in front of us that have been neglected and that need to be addressed. They have to be prioritized by their importance. You know, our streets, they're not in great shape. Our sewers, they need help. Everything that you named off is a valid issue that needs to be addressed, but there needs to be a priority to each. Cascade Bridge, as I mentioned, it is a priority when we can find the funding, but we have to make it a priority to find that funding. We can't just say, we'll wait till 2024. You know, our sewer system is currently under some construction with a plan behind that. Our streets, I hate to say it, when I was a kid here, every street in this town was paved. I worked for World East Asphalt and Paving, and I helped pave every one of them, so I know they used to be good.
Mr. Deal.
Yes, I want to say that I'm a proud member of the Greater Burlington Partnership. I have had two very successful businesses, small businesses in my past, and I've also been a school teacher for over twenty years. So I do bring a lot of different perspective to this city council if I were to get elected. And I'm self-employed now. I'm a fiscal conservative. What I really think needs to be addressed here, and I disagree with Mr. Fleming wholeheartedly, is that we have to listen to the majority of the people. I have been talking to them every single night since February, and they all say the same thing. If we don't tackle our crime issue, we are never going to progress as far as business is concerned.
Mr. Klop.
Can I have the question again? I want to make sure I don't miss something.
Let's role-play one of those important decisions you'll have to make. It's budget-related. We are tens of millions of dollars behind in upgrading our sewer system to comply with EPA requirements. Cascade Bridge is closed. The Mount Pleasant Street Overpass will need significant work. Many local streets and roads need work. As a community, we're also trying to add police and fire personnel. How should we pay for all these things?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. I might be. I think, don't we pay Mr. Ferno a nice sum to be out there looking for them grants for us? He's the one that's supposed to be doing, taking care of that business, part of the business. You know? You understand what I'm saying? There's a lot of fat we can trim off the budget. I mean, you know, we're spending four hundred thousand dollar a year on a memorial auditorium, you know? We can turn that into revenue if we maybe end up selling it to somebody and let them take it over. That's just a thought. Otherwise, it's a gray area.
Mr. Rinker.
There's not a lot of information in that role-play question, but I'll tell you, the best thing we could do, anytime you look at a budget, is prioritize what's important, what's necessary, and then determine what's going to be the best route of taking care of it, whether it's something we take care of this year, next year, or later on down the road, such as Cascade Bridge. I think we all agree that over time, we need to add more police officers to our community. I'd also say that we've got things coming up in the future, such as starting to pay for firefighters that are going to become necessary. So it just comes back to prioritization and what's available. We can't spend more than we take in, just like any household in Burlington. But at the same time, like any household in Burlington, we need to be looking to the future and figure out, okay, well, what can we do better to grow our community so that we can start to cover those costs in the future, such as, you already mentioned it, sewer separation, but we're looking at in the neighborhood of fifty to a hundred million over the next fifty years, so.
Ms. Murray.
I think safety is our number-one priority for the citizens of Burlington. If we study the Mount Pleasant Overstreet Overpass, and we find out that it is a significant risk of actually falling apart and crumbling on someone as they're passing underneath it or on it, that may bump that up to a number-one priority, as Rinker and a lot of the others said. We probably have to make some tough decisions and prioritize what comes first to keep our citizens safe. Something else that some other communities have considered is a possibility of a tax rebate system for seniors that are on fixed income. I don't know if something like that would work here. Incentizing for shared resources. Have we looked at maybe sharing the Burlington Police Department, the West Burlington Police Department? So just maybe some ideas that we haven't thought about, maybe revisited.
Mr. Fleming.
Didn't I do this already?
Get extra credit if you do it again.
Nope, you haven't done it yet.
Restate the question.
Let's role-play one of these important decisions you'll have to make. It's budget-related.
Okay.
We are tens of millions of dollars behind in upgrading our sewer system to comply with EPA requirements. Cascade Bridge is closed, and the Mount Pleasant Street Overpass will need significant work. Many local streets and roads need work. As a community, we're also trying to add police and fire personnel. How should we pay for all these things?
The first thing we have to do is listen to the city manager and some of our staff here. We have a great number of people here working for the city. And what we're presented with as a council, of course, are all the details of all these needs in the community. And like everybody else is saying, you have to prioritize. Now, the problem is, you get five people up here, and you get everybody to agree on the same priority. But one thing I've noticed in the recent years, Jim Ferno, the city manager, has presented us with so much data that it makes it a little easier, if you will, to look at some of these costs and say, what can we maybe do away with possibly, and how do we prioritize? And that's the way that should work.
Mr. Elmer.
Well, dollars is, they're always difficult, but a councilman's job really is two things. One is infrastructure, the second is quality of life. Quality of life, I suppose you could put that in categories. Major quality of life might be safety, or police, fire, that sort of thing. Maybe minor quality of life might be a swimming pool or something like that. So you do prioritize. I know for a fact that we spent over thirty million dollars on this sewer separation thing, and I heard the other day from Jim Ferno, he told me that they did get an extension on that, which is great, but what that really, in fact, means is that it's just going to cost us more dollars in the long run, so it's going to be about another fifty million. You just don't have the dollars there all the time. We get about twelve million in taxes, and the budget's like seventy-nine or something, so that ought to be an indicator right there. So it's very difficult.
I'm really going to try to keep the right order, y'all. I swear I am.
I'm going to help you.
I'm going to have to pay attention.
Rob Sussman from KBR will ask the next question.
Crime has been on the minds of many residents in this community, especially those who call in on the KBR Talk Show and interact with us on social media. Now, a lot of you support adding police officers, but what else can be done to fight crime in Burlington?
Oh, with me? Well, restart that then. I didn't know it was me. I have been the most aggressive campaigner about combating crime in this town. And yes, we do need more police officers, but no, they do not necessarily togetherly solve the crime issue. We need to implement other programs. One of them is community policing, which we used to have in this town when we weren't understaffed. Community policing works in other cities. It'll work here. It did before, before we had the violent crime surge within the last two to four years. Aside from that, we need youth prevention programs. We used to have JSG Youth Center, which was astronomically saved a lot of youths. We need crime cameras in some of the neighborhoods that are stigmatized. I'm out of time again, as always, but yes, those are some of the ideas.
Mr. Klop.
Adding four more police officers, yeah, it might take some pressure off the ones we have already, but like Scott said, we need more community policing going on. If the community get more involved, it's going to help cut our costs. So let's say, you know, we hire four more, and they're going to have to work more hours, you know? You never know if the crime goes up. But if the community's involved, we can kind of put that back down. We can chase the criminals out of here, put them on notice if the community gets more active. I mean, I did it. I mean, I sat right across the table from a guy during a deposition, you know, and he made the choice to put us both there that day. I wasn't worried about retaliation. If that's what he wanted to do, fine, but I just believe that that's what we need to do.
Mr. Rinker.
I've got four or five things that I'd like to see us take steps towards doing. One is adding an additional K-9 unit. I think most communities our size have at least two. I think that's something that we could really benefit from. The other is random policing measures, working in conjunction with Des Moines County Sheriff's Office, West Burlington Police Department, and Iowa State Patrol, and putting together programs that are aggressive in nature and combating things like trafficking. I'd like to maximize the police reserve program. I think that would help alleviate some of the stresses that we've got on our current police staff. And the other thing I'd like to see us do, when I was a military police officer out in San Diego, they actually have a community watch program where people are organized and trained and overseen by the police department. They work in groups, they go out into communities to provide a show of force. Ultimately, the whole goal here is to make people that are in our community and are here to commit crime uncomfortable with being in our community, and it makes Burlington more of a hard target.
Ms. Murray.
An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Ben Franklin told us that in seventeen thirty-six, and it still holds to today. I know some of you have heard me talk about the Ames Police and their Do Not Disrespect Campaign, kind of a play on donuts, and you can check that on in YouTube video in the context of time. I won't go into that now. I'd like to see us bring back city block parties. I've been in communities where they do that, our streets here in Burlington, and it's a lot of fun. After you share a bratwurst and a beer with somebody, it's pretty hard to call them a stranger. And something that was started here recently is called the Turquoise Table Project, and you can go online and look this up. There was a woman by the name of Christian Snell, and she wanted to recreate the feel of a community that you could just go out and play and talk with, interact with your neighbors in your front yard. She was, she bought a picnic table, spray painted it kind of electric turquoise, thank you Sherman Williams, and brought a pot of coffee out, and the neighbors came, and they became good friends, and, oh, sorry.
First of all, we certainly have to continue to support our police department, which I happen to think is a very good department. But I think we have to make the public more aware that we all have a responsibility to support police work, call it community policing, whatever. But there are programs, I'm not going to go into it now, but there are programs where we can possibly get the public more involved in being aware of what's going on and relating that information to the proper authorities. These things do happen in other communities, and I think it can happen here. I also think the police reserve program is a good one and should be expanded.
Mr. Elmer.
Well, I had a discussion with Doug Beard, the police chief, and he tells me that crime is essentially down, at least in the numbers, they're down. It's the in-your-face crime, the blatant things that happen out there that make it look so bad right now. And of course, it doesn't change it, but it does look, it does look bad. Adding more officers would seem to me to be the correct answer. And the reason I say that, because I'm not going to pretend to know what all these solutions might be to reduce crime. Those guys do. There's some things that the chief has done already, just the addition of just a couple of people, and one of those things is that they're able to take a lot more proactive measures now than they were before, because they're freeing up some of the officers from just patrol. They're also, I went to the judges, I know, a while back, and they're holding people a little longer now, so you get rid of that retaliatory kind of efforts, too. So they are doing some things. I think adding the people would be the best.
I tell you right up front, I can't answer this in a minute. This is something I'm passionate about. We add police officers, it's two to three years before they become effective, but that has to happen. Our communities have to get involved in our neighborhoods. We've got to have more owner-occupied homes within our city. We need to have video surveillance on our rental units so that we can see what goes on, and the police have that, those eyes. Amy Beavers has a Meet Your Neighbor program, which I think is extremely important. If you know the people in your neighborhood, whether they live there or rent, everybody gets to know each other, and we watch out for each other. I've done it in my own neighborhood. We watch out for each other. We should do it throughout the city. We've got to have a better prosecution system, too. These people can't go to jail and then be slapped on the wrist. There has to be a penalty that comes with this, and we also have to address the welfare system at a state level, which needs to come from each one of these cities in southeast Iowa and eastern part of Mississippi.
We're going to do, we have to take like a commercial break now, so we'll take a little break.
Commercial break, how long? Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Take five, expect three, and get two.
Take five.
Five.
You know, I'm telling everybody down there, now, down to the eleventh hour, and so there's what you can do, and what you can't. Everybody believes that we're wasting taxes, when in fact...
Oh, thank you.
The taxes are too high, y'all. What would it be if you had to live off the taxes for your buddy? What would you do?
Oh.
It'd be nothing.
That's why it's some of these questions.
Yeah, they're just, they're just off the wall, yeah.
You know, like listening to the public. Sure, I'm going to listen.
Well, sure you are.
But I've always had that problem of, I'm supposed to represent everybody, not just Charlie Pete that came down.
The person you're supposed to represent, the person that can't do it themselves because you don't know.
Right, yeah.
And you may have to disagree with them to protect each other.
Yeah, I know.
That's a, that's a dangerous thing, so I don't know.
I don't know, it's interesting.
Interesting, yeah.
Hey, Brian. You're going to the hospital tomorrow. Thursday? Yeah, I thought I wrote it down. What time of day? I know.
Yeah. I didn't know there was a 6:00 AM.
6:00 AM.
Not for a long time.
All right, I think we'll get started back up here. This will be for Mr. Klop going first. Many candidates for office have a pet project. What's yours?
Mine's just basically, I want to clean up the crime that goes on around this town and get our streets back in order. That's my pet peeve, and that's what I'll stand behind.
Mr. Rinker.
I have no pet projects. I am for whatever benefits our community best in the long run, and that's a mix of a lot of things. It's a mix of working with the Burlington Police Department to prevent crime. It's a mix of growing our community's tax base. It's a mix of making decisions to redevelop the riverfront. If it's not something that's taken care of here rather quickly, we'll have to face the auditorium. So there's a lot of issues that are something that's going to be on my plate, so I don't have any one thing that I'm up here running for.
Ms. Murray.
One of the projects I was involved in this summer was the Senior Produce Box Project, and I do envision that we could do more with community gardens. Food gardening did increase 25% in the last seven years. I envision some type of distribution system fueled by volunteers that could help sustain our weakest links in Burlington. We know that consumption of inadequate produce does age someone 14 years faster.
Mr. Fleming.
My focus is to work with the city manager and staff getting into the budget process. This is a tedious process. It takes a lot of time, but I think focusing on that will give us some good results in this community, is something we have to do.
Mr. Al.
Well, I don't, I really don't have a pet project, but one of the things that I do have some great enthusiasm about is the riverfront and that flood wall, mainly because having been on the Steamboat Days Board for like 25 years, I was down there with pumps and everything, so I know what that's like, and I can empathize with the building owners down there, what they're going through. So I suppose, you know, for lack of something else, that'd be it. But I have a desire to take care of many things, yeah, so.
Mr. Elmer.
I don't have a pet project. I do have a pet, if that counts. But I just want to make Burlington a safe and welcoming place for its citizens and for its visitors. I want it to be an attractive place, so when people come here, they're happy to be here. It's a beautiful city when it's kept up, and I want to listen to the people. I want to see change come from these chambers for our citizens, and I want to see our taxes stabilized.
Mr. Deel.
I don't have a pet project or agenda. I have been, you know, aggressively attacking crime in this town, but that's because that's coming from the people. So if there is a pet project or an agenda, my agenda is to address what the majority voice of the people have been saying since day one. Let's get a handle on our crime, and then business will flourish, and money will come back to our town, and it'll be a great city once again.
Sometimes, the outcome from the decisions you will have to make as a council member will take some time to be able to evaluate. Knowing what we know today, was the decision to build a RecPlex a good decision or a bad decision, in your opinion?
Mr. Rinker.
I think it was a good decision. I think ultimately increases the level of tourism in our community. In the long run, it will have a significant benefit in, from the tax revenue side of things. It also provides one of those major amenities that a lot of people look for when they're looking to move to a community. It's a great resource for youth sports and adult sports. There are a lot of small businesses that sponsor teams out there, and I'd be curious as to the number of people that that facility supports in our community.
Ms. Murray.
Love the RecPlex. It generates thousands in revenue every year. Naysayers should drive around this complex on a weekend and see the cars and buses. Just try to book a local hotel. Have fun waiting in line at a restaurant and tell me that this isn't good for our community. Just look at the license plates in the parking lots. All of those cars are not from Des Moines County, and they're helping us provide the safety and infrastructure that makes Burlington such a great place to live, work, and play.
I like the RecPlex. I think it's one of the smartest things we did. I'm hoping we can expand, by the way, into indoor plexes of some kind for winter sports. And again, as people have already pointed out, the side benefits of this touch many people in our community. And I go out there occasionally, and like you say, you see the number of people out there from all over. It's an exciting and it's a positive venture for our town.
Mr. Al.
I support the RecPlex 100%. The main reason is the, probably the economic impact it has on our community, which is sometimes hard to measure, but I'm sure that it's there. It doesn't all go into the city coffers, but I think as these folks pointed out, hotels, motels, restaurants, and all that sort of thing benefit from that. We have to do some of that, and not only that, I think it's just another, one of those quality of life issues that we need to maintain, so.
Mr. Elmer.
I support it because it's there, so we need to utilize it and enjoy the revenues that come from it. It cannot do the city harm to have a complex like that, and as we grow in the future, it will bring more and more to our city, so the fact that it's there, we have to support it.
When we're talking about quality of life, residents need outlets, and the RecPlex is one of the perfect opportunities for those outlets that are positive. It takes away from our crime issue to have positive outlets, especially for the youth. So yes, I support the RecPlex. It is a wonderful thing. It helps with motel, hotel tax, everything involved. It's a great place, great facility.
Mr. Klop.
I support the RecPlex. It's one rattlesnake that ain't come back to bite us yet. I mean, seriously, I mean, it was a good decision when they decided to build it. I mean, it does, it brings in all kinds of people from different communities, and they get to see what we got there, you know? And word of mouth is the biggest way to get information out there. And they tell other people from other states, and someday maybe they'll come here and want to use that facility like we do, you know?
I'm going to, or Tanner Cole with Hawkeye will ask the next question.
On Sunday, Burlington Police shot and killed a man. In the last few days, we've heard complaints from his friends and family about a lack of communication from Burlington staff, police, and city council members. And Autumn Steele's mother posted on her Facebook today saying the same happened with her case in 2015. In a situation like Sunday's shooting, what is the city council's responsibility to families of people who are killed by the Burlington Police Department? What is the council's responsibility to the communities those people are a part of?
May I go first on this?
Nope.
Ms. Murray.
It's a tough situation when you have ongoing investigation and you can't leak critical information out. I do feel deeply for these families, Autumn Steele's families, everyone's families, members involved, and I do have some friends that were involved in this tragedy, so my heart goes out to them. I don't know if a policy where we could reach out to these families would be necessary. I think they just feel they need to be supported, and I think that the city government, as a government for the people, needs to support them in the fashion that they feel they want to be supported, and I think that maybe we drop the ball just a tiny bit on this one.
Mr. Fleming.
The city council was advised by the chief of police to not make any comments until the investigation was completed by the DCI. I respect that decision. How dare we go out and start making statements until we know all the facts? Yes, I'm sympathetic to the loss of people, no matter who they are, but I'm more respectful of the chief of police doing the job the way he wants it done.
Mr. Al.
Well, I think what you have to do is complete this investigation. The city council has a responsibility, I think, but it really doesn't get into the legal system too much. Your responsibility doesn't extend that far. You have to, you're forced to trust your fire, or your police department, I'm sorry, your county attorney and people like that. This thing that's going on right now, it just occurred, I think the DCI's got that right now, and so even locally, we can't, we can't touch it. I mean, we can't do anything. Councilmen usually don't know all the details of that to begin with, so you could be foolish to make comments about it, I think, so.
Mr. Elmer.
This is something that I'm passionate about. I was at the shooting at Cassandra Taylor's house, and I was at this city council work session the following Monday. I was here last night when Reverend Fred spoke, and these people aren't looking for the city council to give them answers as to what happened. What they're looking for is compassion from this city and from the leaders of this city, and the fact that they've lost a family member and that they're hurting. They're looking for somebody within the city authority to say, hey, I don't know the facts of what happened, and we'll find out, but I have compassion, I have feeling for your loss. And as a city, we have to wake up and do this, and we don't do this. And I have sat here in these meetings and watched this happen, and it's appalled me. We have to show compassion to our citizens of Burlington. These families have lost family members. The police will do their job and do their investigation.
Mr. Deel.
Yes, I echo Mr. Elmer's sentiments about compassion for the victims and the families involved that it affects. It's sad, it's disgraceful. This goes back to my aggressive platform about crime. But at the same point, like Councilman Fleming said, we have to set aside, as council people, this is not something that we can judge one way or the other until all the facts are in. And I am not a fan of Facebook. I'm on it, but I'm not a fan of it. And there's just too many people accusing each other and being angry and negative, and negativity does not help promote this city. We need positivity.
Mr. Klop.
Well, I believe that, yeah, we can't answer a lot of questions when something tragic like that happens as a city council. I mean, you know, we have guidelines we got to go by. I mean, if we start getting out there and spouting things out, it could become a legal issue on our part, you know, because we may get false impressions of what we could possibly do for somebody, you know? We just got to stay firm and just make sure we take care of our people, you know, and show them that we have compassion.
Mr. Rinker.
Tanner, to answer your question, I would say really the only thing we can do is encourage C staff to be as forthcoming with information that is appropriate to be delivered to whomever asks, for whatever reason. Whenever you have a death, especially when it's law enforcement involved, there's going to be a lot of information that will be divulged as time goes along, but due to any investigation, you're not going to be able to just start throwing things out there, because it compromises not only the investigation, but it could also be detrimental to the city as well. So from a city council's perspective, that's about the only thing we can do, is just encourage them to divulge the information necessary that's appropriate. And I think the appropriateness of that information would be decided upon by law enforcement, Burlington Police Department, or DCI, depending on the scenario.
Tax increment financing, or TIF, is often misunderstood in its use. As a member of the council, in what ways would you support the use of TIF? And what ways would you oppose the use of TIF? Mr. Fleming.
Well, there certainly are some circumstances where I think TIF can be employed and should be, especially in the case of getting into blighted areas where we're trying to improve them and so forth. When you get into TIF from a residential standpoint for homes, normally I wouldn't support that. However, if there are cases where there's a large infill, where putting a TIF project in would improve the overall neighborhood in which it's going and increase traffic flow and that type of thing, then I would support it. So it's not a, I'm for it or against it, it depends on the situation.
Mr. Al.
I would agree with that. It really does depend on the situation. I generally support TIF, but TIF can be abused rather easily and quickly. I think maybe to play off Bob's example this a little bit, infrastructure in a new subdivision might be a way to effectively use TIF. I've seen some communities, and at the league, they talked about communities who have their community 80% TIF. That's probably not right. They're probably not retiring those TIF areas and just continuing to look up things to do with them. That's just blatant abuse. I would, I would support TIF for some subdivision work and things like that, but I don't know, almost on a case-by-case basis, because each is so unique, so.
Mr. Elmer.
TIF is something I think that's good when it's used correctly. Right now, every case that comes before the council is a case-by-case basis. You know, TIF has an outline of what it's supposed to be used for. If there's a situation that's brought to the city that benefits the city above and beyond what those guidelines are, then I think we should be open to listening to it. If it brings in infrastructure, if it does something for our education, if it does something positive for the community above and beyond what TIF was designed for, I think it should be looked at. Otherwise, we stick to the rules.
Mr. Deal.
I agree. TIFs were not intended for housing developers when originally was designed. And I would like to stick to that. Housing developers should not get TIFs. With that being said, you know, I'm going against the grain here. But people are tired of corporate welfare and that's basically what a TIF is, is corporate welfare. And what I want to do is to be proactive and suggesting and developing and supporting sources for growing our low-tax base. Because I am 100% against raising taxes, which only hurts our most vulnerable citizens, the senior citizens and the poor. TIFs hurt them immensely.
Mr. Klop.
Well, this will be short and sweet. TIFs should be used for what they're designed to be used for. And that's basically, I mean, if you're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul, you're always gonna be in debt. So, that's where I'm gonna stand there.
Mr. Rinker.
So, TIF is one of those tools that we have available to us in order to try and level the playing field when it comes to building property or developments in southeast Iowa. The cost of building things in southeast Iowa is typically higher than it is in other parts of the state. So, that's one of the tools that we have to level that playing field. I am for TIF generally, depending on the projects. I think it's a project-by-project basis. It will depend largely upon the outline of the project, like, for example, it's been discussed, infrastructure. If there's a significant amount of infrastructure that needs to be put in place for development, that's something that I would lean to more for a TIF project. TIF is something that's commonly used by other communities in order to draw an investment. And I think it's something that we need to look at using on a project-by-project basis, once again, when development is brought in front of us.
Ms. Murray.
TIF is challenging in that I don't, I'm not sure that just a policy would encompass everything and we might actually be stepping over a good opportunity. Des Moines comes to mind. They brought Apple in and you say, well, Apple has plenty of money, why would we do that in? But I'll read the article for you real quickly here. They promised to invest $100 million in newly created public improvement funds to use for community development, revitalization of streets, libraries and parks that use sports campus. And so, we might say, we don't want to get involved in TIF, but it actually can be a way to generate a lot of revenue and bring things back to your community, so.
Economic development and job creation is a tough business. How do you intend to encourage economic development in Burlington? Mr. Al.
Well, you had him first, right? Economic development, wow. You know what I'm gonna do? I'm going to call on Jason and say, get busy, buddy. I don't know, I really don't know. I have had the opportunity to work with the Chamber, Go Greater Burlington, whatever. And I think what they do is very good. Councils themselves are very handicapped in that they can't do a whole lot. There was a question, I think one of the gentlemen from the media asked me one time about, should the city take over what the Chamber does in terms of economic development? And my answer was, of course, no, mainly because they just don't have the time or the experience or any of that to do that sort of thing. So, I don't know. I'm beating around your question here and not answering it, but I just, I don't know. You know, that's all I can say.
Mr. Elmer.
I think that the people hosting this event are the people that we look to for that part of our community, the Greater Burlington Partnership and the Chamber. Their job is to promote and be the cheerleaders that brings economic development to our town. As a city council, we are limited in what we can do, but we can present a great city. We can present a safe city and a clean city with good infrastructure and let you guys do your job.
Mr. Deal.
With that being said, I want to re-echo that about the infrastructure, about crime. Those are issues we will never get beyond if we don't tackle those first. We will not have economic development at the rate that we need with our low-tax base without attacking crime first. With that being said, I think, and I also echo, the Greater Burlington Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce, that is where it needs to come from, not the city council. But with that also, we need to try to continue to promote small businesses. I think small businesses is where our growth rate is in this community and will continue. Tim Scott, former city councilman, has several businesses and buildings that he owns down on Jefferson Street and he's doing a great job on his own without any help from the city. And that's what we need, is more people like him that go out there and do the job like I did when I did my own small businesses. I didn't look for help or support from the city or from anyone else. I did it myself. We gotta pull up our, you know, bootstraps and start, you know, manning up.
Mr. Klop.
Now, I lost a question in my head.
Economic and job development is a tough business. How do you intend to encourage economic development in Burlington?
Well, like Scott said, you gotta tackle the crime issues and everything. You gotta beautify and make it appealing to get companies to come in here anyway. I mean, as far as small business, yeah, I think everybody should have the opportunity to start a small business. I've been trying to do the self-employment thing myself. It's a rough little gig. I mean, when you got bigger companies out there, they can do it in five days where it's gonna take you eight, yeah, you know? That's basically, I mean, the only way you're gonna get growth is you gotta clean up the mess first.
Mr. Rinker.
There's a few things you can do. You can create a low-tax environment in order to encourage growth in commercial entities, whether it's small businesses or large manufacturing facilities. You can waive permitting costs, so that way new businesses moving into the area have a lower cost when it comes to bringing business into the area. You can encourage small business growth by grant programs. One thing that I've always been in favor of is creating an incubator for talent. And one of the things that I think we could do locally is, and I think the Chamber of Commerce used to do this, but provide space at a lower cost to new graduates of, somebody moving or graduating from University of Iowa, for example. And they want to move to southeastern Iowa and start an accounting firm. We could provide them a low-cost space in order to work and service clients. So, that way they have the ability to get their feet underneath of them, start their business, and then ultimately transition out of that space into a space of their own. I think if they do that, then they create roots in our community and create a client base in our community. They're more likely to stay in our community. I think if we were to do that on a medium-sized scale, that I think we could see a positive effect from that.
Ms. Murray.
I want to applaud everything that Greater Burlington has done for our community and I just want to brag a little bit about some of the things that has been happening. Since 2009, Greater Burlington has benefited from over $300 million in new corporate capital facility investments and the creation of over 1,300 new jobs. Woo-hoo! During this same period, manufacturing has grown. We employ now over 20% of the area's workforce. For the last two years, Greater Burlington was ranked by Site Selection Magazine as number one on the Mississippi River for Economic Development. 2017, this year marked the fifth year in a row we are recognized as a top metropolitan community by Site Selection Magazine. I want to help Burlington move in a positive direction.
I think it's key that the city council work in concert with the Greater Burlington Partnership. We, as council members, are invited to work with the Chamber if we like. I, for instance, am now serving on the Economic Development Committee. I know Jim Davidson's working on one of the committees. So, while I think the major thrust comes from the Chamber, it must have and should have the support of the city council. We work together as a team and we make good things happen.
As a member of the council, when is it okay for you to micromanage city staff? Mr. Elmer.
I think we have a city manager that does that, who in turn answers to the city council. So, micromanagement would be done through Jim Purnell from the council and then he should do his job.
Mr. Deal.
I'll echo those sentiments as well. By Iowa statute, the city council only has one employee that they're responsible for and that is the city manager. He or she is supposed to do the direction and focus that direction to the city staff, down to the department heads, and so on down the line. That's where it needs to stay and that's where it's appropriate by law.
Mr. Klop.
I agree with them. They took the words right out of my mouth. I have nothing to say, honestly.
Mr. Rinker.
The city council's job is to create policies and vote on them. The city manager's job is to implement them however he sees best. And that involves managing the people that work for the city of Burlington. With the current city manager we have today, I don't see any scenario that would involve us micromanaging a city staff member as long as he continues to do what he does best.
Ms. Murray.
What I understand, because I've been doing some research, is we used to have about 273 city employees and now that's been reduced to about 200. I think they do an outstanding job with being asked to do more with less of a workforce. It's not my job to micromanage them. Actually, my role of a council member would be to find the balance between representing the best interests of the majority of the residents while respecting the rights of all.
The last thing a city councilman should do is try to manage around the city manager. If you bring in a good city manager, and we've got one, I might add, let him do his job. It'll work very well.
Mr. Al.
I agree. I think that the system as it is in place has a chain of command and you don't jump around in that chain of command. If you have an issue with an employee, you can talk to the manager about it, but you can go to that employee. You let him work it out.
We're gonna do a closing statement. Each candidate will now have 90 seconds to offer a closing statement, starting with you, Mr. Deal.
90 seconds? Stop that clock, stop that clock!
I thought you said nine seconds.
Wait a minute, stop that. A closing comment. 90 seconds to say everything that needs to be said about this city. There's so many great things to say about this city. And that is true. This is a great city and I don't want people to forget that, even with the warts that we have. And the biggest one, and I keep saying it over and over and it seems like I'm, you know, hitting people over the head, but it's because I'm being hit over the head every single night. Because people keep saying to me they want crime fixed. That is what is ultimately important in this campaign. This is probably one of the most important elections this city, it's a record-setting election with 15, 16 candidates, possible writing candidates as well, that are out here because people are frustrated, they're angry. They don't know where to go to and who to reach out to. They're saying, there's problems, let's solve them. And we can if we work together as a community in a positive, constructive way and use proactive ideas, innovative ideas. This is how we can synergize the city and make it better, is by working together. And that's what I want to do.
Mr. Klop.
I'm sitting up here with six other candidates. All of them are well-spoken. Most of them wore suits and ties. I didn't, I didn't get the memo, sorry. You know, it's the truth, you know? We got to hit the hard spots first, you know? We gotta all work together, everybody. If we can't do that, we ain't gonna grow. That's just the bottom line. And if the people in Burlington ain't willing to step up and help us grow, they just want us to do it for them, it's not gonna happen. I don't know how to say it, but that's where I'm at, you know?
Mr. Rinker.
What I would say is if I'm elected to the city council, that the people of Burlington are gonna get somebody that is very determined and concerned and making sure that I'm with the long-term and the short-term success and growth of Burlington. I've spent a lot of time talking to people in the private and the public sector and working on plans that ultimately will benefit our community in the long run. And I'm hoping that I have an opportunity to work with the city council, the current people in the council and whoever's elected, on implementing those plans and seeing them grow.
Ms. Murray.
I'd like to thank Bob, Kyrie, members of the listening audience and some of my fellow running mates out in the audience, too. I also want to extend a standing ovation to each of my running mates here. It is not easy to put your name in the running for a city council position. I've heard that people wait literally decades for the right moment and I'm excited to say I've waited 10 years for my moment. And I do have a quote, those of you that know me know, on the back of my phone, it says, "You don't have to be great to start, but you have to start to be great." And I am ready. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves. That's for Matt, who always teases me because I usually don't have long sleeves on. I am ready and willing to work for Burlington. I hope you'll consider giving me that opportunity. I'm excited to win, I'm psyched to work, I'm humbled to ask for your vote on October 10th. I'm fairly short at 5'3", but a vote for me will produce a lengthy legacy of exemplary service for Burlington. Thank you and Godspeed to those polls.
Mr. Fleming.
I'm hoping to be re-elected because I sense some good things happening in our town. As you know, and you've heard me say before, I'm very high on our city manager. I think he's helping us to, a new, more positive direction to improve things in this community. Yes, there are a lot of challenges. Yes, it's not gonna be easy, but when I see the progress that we've been making in recent years, to me, it's enjoyable to be able to play a role in that and that's what I'm hoping to do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Al.
I was not born in Burlington. I guess in effect I chose Burlington and over the years I've given Burlington a couple hours of volunteerism and whatnot. So, I'm proud of what I've done for Burlington. Let me thank the Chamber again for hosting this event and inviting me. My personal goals are pretty much outlined at the beginning, but like Bob, I see some really neat things happening here in Burlington right now. I know that the crime exists, I know there's down, negative things, but there's a lot of positives going on right now. The PD has hired a couple people back. The Fire Department's talking about hiring them back. The nuisance staff has been increased. They'll soon have a new police department, a new flood wall. There's a number of things like that. The self-imposed funding of the reserves, they're like $140,000 away from that and I think if I'm not mistaken, they'll soon reach that limit. So, that's exceptional. That's good. That gives you a little bit of flex and I think that's probably why they will be able to talk about Cascade Terrace down the road and things like that. So, actually, it just goes back to all these positives and I think there's a lot of neat things happening. I just want to be part of that again. It wasn't quite that easy when I was there before. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Elmer.
I want to thank our hosts and the audience as well. I was born in Key West. I moved back here from Atlanta, one of the fastest-growing cities in the country and very well off as far as jobs. I love this city, I always have. And I came back here and I went through a campaign last fall and I got throughout Burlington, throughout Des Moines County, and I talked to people that live in this city and people that have moved outside this city. And I've gotten their concerns. into and a good education system. This isn't part of my bucket list, it's not because I just have plenty of spare time. I'm passionate about this. I want to represent the people of Burlington, I want to make common sense decisions, and I want to make Burlington a better place to be, not only for today, but for tomorrow and for the next councils that may come. We have children that are growing up here, and they deserve a good future, and we deserve to keep them here. So, I'm asking for your vote, and if I get it, thank you. And if you're happy with the way things are, I might not be your candidate.
I want to thank each of you for your interest in serving the Burlington community. I want to thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and its Government Relations Committee for hosting the event, thank those in the audience here, and those who have been watching and are listening at home for their interest in the City Council election. Please join us for the second debate in this series right here on Thursday evening at 5:30, and also, please vote for the candidates of your choice next Tuesday, October 10th. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. (applause)